Council time for Wednesday, December the 8th. Going to old business, actually, we're going to change the, I'm going to amend the agenda by removing under old business, item number 1.2, we'll discuss that after the first of the year. But let's go to old business. Approving of the minutes, December 1st meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to new business, the 2022 Planning Work, Community Planning Work Program. We, we all received this seven-page document. Kathleen or as Jackie or somebody going to present or say anything?
Jackie can provide an overview, but yes, you did see this during a work session, I believe, last week. I don't believe any amendments have been made yet, and that if council wants to make any amendments to this today would be the day. And then I would also ask if there's amendments that staff have time to go back and review that to see if there's going to be any statutory or staffing impacts or prioritization as well.
So before I have Jackie say anything, I'll ask the council, do we need to have an overview again? Or are we pretty clear on what this work plan is? I think we are pretty clear. Without objection, then, I'm just going to order, I, I, I open up a discussion about, are there any amendments that councillors think that we should ask community planning to address?
Chair, can we scroll down the list there? Do we still have the Gorge Commission thing on there?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Do we, I guess my question would be, I think that was a placeholder based on the presentation we had last week. Do we still need that on there? Maybe I'll ask staff that.
Sure. I think it's probably okay to leave it on just until the final approval by the Gorge Commission and the Secretary of Agriculture. Just in case, I don't foresee anything, but I think that was just the intent, no matter what, just to leave it on there as just an in case.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And Madam Chair, may I, and as to that comment, I'm trying to set up a meeting right now with the new chair of the Gorge Commission, hopefully to have some follow-on discussions and, because there are a lot of recommended changes still from different counties kind of flowing in. So it hasn't been finally approved, and so I would like to see it retained as a placeholder for sure. Kathleen, I did want to bring it up, and maybe this isn't the right place, but you know, between the PA and the sheriff, you know, I was really hoping we could kind of fine-tune this Public Records Act consolidation effort that you're, you're, you're rolling out, because I think we can get some real deficiency in staffing. So I was hoping, is that part of this work plan to continue to work with the PA and the sheriff to kind of isolate that?
Yeah, this work plan is specifically for community planning projects and for the staff, the work that they are doing in the next year. So that it's not regarding the countywide. I mean, that as a result of consolidating the PDRs, that might help alleviate some of their staff resources for PDRs, but I, but other than that, it's, that hasn't been solidified because I do have to respect elected officials and what they are willing and not willing to do.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Hopefully, we can make some progress.
Okay, so I noticed a couple of things. One is under administration, which is the School Board Advisory Committee. And under land use, the number 18, the school district six-year CFP. My understanding was the School Board Advisory Committee kind of was an arm of this land use planning thing, so that they, you know, so that we can have this communication in between times, you know, when they have their CFP or whatever. And I, I don't know if, if you've just bifurcated it because one's administration and the other is actual work. Okay, I see you got it.
Yes.
Okay, so that's fine. The other thing I thought, I'm just, I haven't heard from the other council. I mean, probably not everybody has had a chance to speak yet, but I thought under land or monitoring and implementation, or even land use, it may be under that as well, surface mining overlay is not appeared, does not appear here anywhere. And I, we are going to have a work session on that, but I think we've talked at various times during this year about the need to readdress that overlay. And that may come, I, I don't know, Jackie, if that only comes during the comprehensive plan? Or if we can, if that can be amended during just every year or whatever?
Yeah, that's correct. Yes, it can be like an annual process, like our annual review kind of projects.
So anyway, I, if, I would like to add that to the list, you can, as one of the things to add to the work plan. And I, under transportation, I didn't, I didn't see anything about the third quarter, which we've passed a resolution regarding, I think there should be at least, and, and planning. What we're talking about, I think, when we talk about this, looking at a third quarter kind of is, if nothing else, putting lines on a map so that we, and I, I don't know how far we can go into that, what, what our partners are going to do and everything else. But I, I just, since the council has passed a resolution regarding that, I do think that somehow it should somewhere be placed on the plan. Those are my, those are my comments on the plan. Other comments?
Chair, I, I just have a question about the, the mining overlay. I know that topic has come up, and I know we have a work session coming up. What, is there something specific? Would it be a review or study of the current mining overlay?
Yes, actually, what I think we had talked about earlier is looking at 2012 changes with what it was previously and seeing how that would fit currently. Kind of reviewing what our surface mining overlay is, what it has been, how it was amended, that kind of thing. And, and do we want to actually change that? Do we want to have a different overlay? So? Questions or comments?
Madam Chair?
Who's speaking?
This is Jackie. I just, I wanted to just-
Yes, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Thanks, Jackie. Go ahead.
I just, there was one thing I just wanted to also bring up that Oliver wanted me to mention was the, the addition of the Aging Readiness Plan update that the council had approved during the budget hearing from the Commission on Aging. If we could also add that to the work program as a work item for, for 22.
What's the council's pleasure on that? I, I would say yes.
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 Okay, we've got three yeses, four, maybe five, I can't see, Karen, on my view right now, but anyway, yes. So do we, is there further discussion on this, or do we have a motion to update it?
Madam Chair, this is Rob Klug. May I interject?
Yes.
Okay, if it's all right, I'd like to propose some conceptual language to go into what that Third Bridge work plan would be to the county manager and get some review and then allow that to move forward as far as setting up what our specific roles and responsibilities would be for 2022. So rather than kind of punting it at this point, can, can we take a step and make sure that we're boxing it and putting it into a package that is something that we can definitely work on next year? Is that acceptable?
Chair, this is Kathleen. I think, I think my recommendation at the beginning might help with that process, which is now that we have the three amendments, I believe, that staff have time over and come back in late January, February with an updated plan and any resources that may need to accompany that. So we can bring back that, that language specifically to the council for your review after staff works on it.
Okay, so we're not, we're just really discussing how we'd like to amend it, and then it'll come forward after the first of the year. Okay, sounds good. If there's, are there any other comments or additions or, or anything that the council wants to make before we move on to the next item? Seeing none? We will move on to the Public Health Advisory Committee. Oh, we already did that. Okay, scratch that, we've already done that. And number 2.3, Bonneville Camp, Camp Bonneville. I think this is my, what I, okay, I had a conversation with the mayor a couple of days ago regarding the idea that the state, CMAC came to her, the State Veterans Department had asked about a veterans' home in southwest Washington, or we did, or something, CMAC did. Anyway, there's been a conversation about the possibility that the, that if there were 20 acres on Camp Bonneville, upon which a, a veterans' home could be established, that the State Veterans Department would take that on. In other words, it isn't federal, it's state, and the state would take on looking into this or having a feasibility study. And we have, there has to be a certain population of veterans that exist in a, in a county area, in an area. We definitely have that, and they've even, they have added Clackamas, Multnomah, and Washington Counties. But frankly, I don't think we need those counties in order to make the numbers. We also learned that there, there's quite a number of veterans below the state poverty line that also qualify. Let me see what that percentage is. It's 10 to 12% of these veterans are below the poverty line. And so I, I wanted to ask the council, this is, this is something that we should probably at least act upon in either by saying, no, we don't want to do this, or we do want to do this. And Mayor McEnroe Olgo is going to speak with one of our representatives in the state legislature to ask for feasibility study, study, a feasibility study for the State Veterans Administration. So I'm going to throw it out there to see what you councillors think about this. I thought it would be a very good use of land out there. There are some complications, one of which is there isn't water and sewer out there right now, but this place would probably be, not be built for the next 10 years, or it would take 10 years in order for this place to, this home to be built out there. In driving out there, if any of you have driven out there in that area, it just seems to me that not very far from there, there are some housing developments, which I would think have water and sewer. So I'll just open it up for a discussion here.
Madam Chair, I've, I just, I think this is a very interesting idea to explore. I'm concerned who would determine where at Camp Bonneville it would be located?
I think that would be, that would be between, if there are 20 acres that are, have no ordinance in them and have been cleared, which I believe we have many more than 20 acres that have no ordinance. I would assume that they would look in this feasibility study even for exactly where it would be located, considering that we have, you know, shooting ranges, et cetera, there. You know, you'd have to place it where it's going to be, you know, number one, in a safe place, but I, I would foresee this as also as being able to accommodate both a veterans' home and a regional park if we wanted to, et cetera. I, I don't think it excludes any of the other plans that we might want to have. But I believe it would be the State Veterans Department that might look at this and, and find the area. Then I would say that if, if we are not in agreement with that as far as where it is, then we could say no. That would be my assumption, that answer, that's at least what I, what I would presume from my discussions.
So if I could just segue off from that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the Department of Veterans Affairs, the feasibility study would determine whether or not they want to move it and build it there, because it would be at their expense. I think its site location within the 4,000 acres that we have, or 3,500 acres that may be cleared of ordinance, would be totally up to us, Public Works, the county manager, to determine its best location. I mean, my initial response, and I hope you didn't see it as, as any kind of comment against it. I, I am all in favor of it, but you know, between the water issue, sewer issue, the egress issue, because the, the roads are very challenged out there, that all needs to be fixed up. But that could be all benefited through a, a major construction project by the federal government to put a veterans' home there. I think it's a perfect location. I'm sure C-Trans-
It's not federal, it's state.
Okay, I, well, I think it's a cost sharing between the federal Veterans Department and, and the state, but I could be wrong about that. But a major project, whether state or federal, I think would fix all of those issues, because they'd all have to be dealt with. And the fact that there aren't co-located services right now, you know, maybe in the future there will be, C-Trans would certainly service it if they saw the need. I'm all in favor. I think it's a perfect fit, so I'm hoping we can tell, you know, telegraph that to the state and, and/or the federal government that we would welcome it.
Chair, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, Councilor. I think supporting a project like this is a fantastic idea. I, and I know that we don't have a lot of spare land running around at the county. I have some, when you said 10 years, a little bit of my concern went down, but I have some concern about the readiness, if at all, of the Camp Bonneville site. There's the power and water issue. I, I definitely have a question before any kind of movement forward. With our agreement, the transfer agreement with the Army, what are the allowed uses for the site? I don't recall residential being one of the uses, so I really want to know what we are able to do there before starting to move, like, let's, let's know what the, what the box is that we have to work in. And then a little feasibility on our end of what, what the possibilities there are. I have concerns about the ordinance cleanup and, and, and water quality out there as well. I'd want to make sure that we weren't moving to put something in an area where damage could be done to individuals. So I'd be supportive of, of beginning to explore, but I think there are probably some baseline questions that we should answer before even being able to entertain a conversation with the state.
Chair.
Councilor.
Yeah, I kind of had similar questions. I think certainly, you know, what's allowed. So my thought process was, this is the first I've heard of it, so I really have no other information other than what you've communicated today. So, so thank you for bringing it up. And I think generally, I don't think anybody would disagree with the concept of trying to house a veterans' facility somewhere here that would, that would make sense. I'm wondering if we couldn't, maybe before we go forward, just take a quick step back and, and get a general broad picture of what this process would look like and a little bit of what we can do right now, or what, you know, look at what Camp Bonneville, what the ability is at Camp Bonneville. One, how would this fit into the larger plan that we're working on at, at Camp Bonneville? So what are the, some of the things that we can answer here locally prior to? And then maybe this whole process, the whole program, what does the program look like? What is the facility siting process look like? At what point would we go to the state for feasibility study? Just kind of a, a basic process outline to how we actually get to saying, okay, yeah, we're good, let's do this. So that's what I would hope we could do. Maybe next step would be just lay out some of the groundwork that has to be done even before we say, yes, let's go forward. That would be sort of my request, I think. And if there's any other information we can get on, on what this process is and how the state would fund it, that would be, that would be beneficial.
So I, what I think I'm hearing is that we need to do more work on our end before we even allow for any kind of a, an answer or feasibility study. Is that what I'm hearing, council?
Yes, I would, Madam Chair, I, I would just change the narrative. It sounds like everyone supports it, and these are basic steps that would go into moving the idea forward. So I think all the steps that both Julie and Temple outlined are basic steps to saying, yeah, we're, we're interested in moving forward. Let's see what this would look like. And is the state interested? And who's going to pay for the feasibility study? I was kind of shocked at the cost. Yeah, it is pretty costly for them to do the feasibility study.
So, so I suppose we do have some forward work to do first before they, you know, take on that responsibility and want to, want to put that outlay. So, number one, is this something that the Army would allow us to do? Number two, where would, I, you know, I don't want too, too much of our staff time going into this. These should be pretty high-level, I mean, questions that are readily answered because the study, the feasibility, and maybe even where as a part of the study would, might, I mean, we can give kind of a, a direction or get, get information about where it might, and where it might sit, and if this works. But I, can I, the questions you want to answer first, you want, whether, whether the Army will let us do it? What, what else? How does it fit in with our plan? We don't know that because we don't have a plan yet. What else?
Well, and Bill Richardson, I think, just went through the legal uses pretty much in great detail just last year. So that should be readily available in the PA's office. I think, I think you're right. Some of these are just easily unknown questions.
Is there someone that represents the state or who has a really good intimate knowledge of, of this program, this process? How these facilities are sited that could come and, and communicate that to us in a, maybe a short work session or something where we just have a, a good idea of what this whole program or process looks like to site one of these facilities?
Yeah, I, I would imagine there, it, there is somebody. So I, we can, we can ask for that to be done. I don't know whether CMAC, people on the CMAC committee here-
They just did a presentation at CMAC, so yeah, they're readily available.
Who, who would you suggest, Council Madvedji, somebody from CMAC or?
No, no, that, they, they had a presentation for CMAC. That was my understanding. I missed that meeting. I'm a member there too, but it, I mean, we can get someone from their department to come and speak, just like they did at CMAC, if that's what-
Okay, that's what, that's what we can do then. We'll just leave this discussion until we have somebody to present more information so that we can make an educated or informed decision about whether to go forward or not, whether to have any feasibility. So I'd appreciate that. I, yeah, I was, that's fine. Anything else before we leave the subject?
Just for my clarification, because I, I assume we have staff that's doing this to help support this process. So just getting back also the basics of what we can and cannot use for that land. Update probably on where we're at on the cleanup and the potential timeframe, that might be a little longer because we're in the middle of a review on that right now, and then contacting somebody from the state to talk about process for the feasibility study, the site allocation and all of that, and bring that back as a work session.
Yes, if that's not too, I mean, you know, I, I think there are some things that we've put off anyway with regard to the cleanup or, anyway. Yes, sounds right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to the next item, the City of Vancouver funding request for St. Paul's Shelter. Are you presenting, Kathleen?
I actually have Michael Torres on this morning, who can help go over this request. So this came from the City of Vancouver regarding a shelter and funding, I think, through the summer timeframe. So I'll hand this over to Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you, County Manager, and good afternoon, well, good morning still, Chair and Council. We did receive a request from the City of Vancouver to fund a, an indoor shelter activity that's taking place at, at St. Paul's Church. It's known as the St. Paul's Men's Shelter. It is operated by a local, relatively small nonprofit called Outsiders Inn. My understanding is that the city has funded this activity, which is basically a max-capacity 30-bed shelter currently with COVID restrictions. It's operating in about six, about 26 persons residents per night. Every day of the week, the city funded it with Affordable Housing Fund dollars through December 31st of this year. They, their contract, the city's contract with Outsiders Inn for this activity is ending, and they will not be able to resume funding. The next opportunity for Affordable Housing Funds from the city to continue funding it will be probably July 1st, 2022, assuming Outsiders Inn applies to the city for additional Affordable Housing Fund funding and that the city awards it to them. The annual cost as currently contracted is $303,519. That's about $25,000 per month estimated for 2022. It would be approximately $160,000 as currently contracted if it were only a six-month contract with us. We would, if we do this for the city, we would basically take dollars that are currently going, that have currently gone into our homeless crisis response system request for applications that is open and will have funding awarded, you know, over the next six months with contracts starting on July 1st. So we could fund this. We would be taking away from future activities for as long as, as this is funded, but it, but it can be done. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Are there, Council, Councilor?
Thank you. Michael, I'm looking at this letter, I read this letter. What, what is the WHO network? And what's the change that was made back in 2019? Do you, do you know?
I, I do. I can answer at least part of that. And I just want to make the caveat that this is not our contract currently. It's the city's contract with Outsiders Inn, so we don't really have a lot of visibility in terms of, of what the expected, you know, what the requirements are and, and the details on the contract. The WHO is the Winter Housing Overflow Program that is primarily a, well, it is a community of face- a community of faith initiative where various churches open doors in the evening for shelter for people to escape the colder months of the year. It usually operates, it varies a little bit, but between November and April is kind of like the, the WHO season. What this, St. Paul's is one of the churches that has, you know, actively participated in the WHO for, you know, they have a long history of community support and participation in the WHO. What this activity is, is they are using the space that the WHO was, that St. Paul's was using for the WHO, but year-round and to make it sustainable. Outsiders Inn is providing the staffing to operate the shelter. So it really is a, an overnight shelter only with relatively minimal staffing. People come in and utilize the space to escape the weather. And then they leave the next morning and hopefully we'll get to come back in the next evening. But instead of just being seasonal, it's year-round.
Okay, got it, thank you. And then it looks like this is just to, to cover a, a gap in funding based on timing of, of this transition is what the letter kind of reads here to me.
That is how the letter reads to me as well. I, you know, but I think that the, whether the City of Vancouver resumes funding of this starting on July 1st or not, I, I do not know for sure. I have, my understanding from Aaron Land at the City of Vancouver is that they have encouraged Outsiders Inn to reapply for affordable housing funds to them. And I also saw that in our existing request for applications, Outsiders Inn also applied to the county for funds for this same activity starting July 1st. So I think it's a little bit ambiguous at this point. Which entity would be funding this activity long-term? But, but the request, as it's presented right now, is, is basically to take over funding from December, from January 1st, after the city's contract expires on December 31st, at least through July 1st.
Okay, so one last question. Could be ARPA, Kathleen, that we could potentially use for this? And it's not a lot of money, generally speaking, I mean, it's a lot of money. There's a lot of money in the context of kind of what we've seen over the last year. Is that a possibility rather than taking it out of the other funds that Michael referenced?
We would have to have that run through Laura Young in the Otter's Office because she's got all the criteria for the ARPA funding. But if the council wants, we, you can, if this is something that you want to support, we can do first step, check ARPA funding first, and if available, use that. If not, move forward with the other funding mechanism.
Okay, thank you. So just generally, I think the idea of not having these shelter beds available, it, it would be disappointing and concerning for me. So I, I would, I would generally be in support of, of funding this for them.
I concur with what Councilor Olson just said. And let me just say, one of the thing, or two of the things that I really like about the idea. One is that there is an element of cooperation with the city, which is an important thing for the county to be doing at this point in time as we solidify our relationship with the city on this subject. Second thing is, I really like the fact that it is beds. This isn't tents or something else. It's, it's, it's shelter beds and that, and that's important. I think that I'm a little concerned though about the question regarding long-term funding. So we need to make it very clear that our obligation would expire on, as I understand it, the last day of June. So if we could make that really clear, and the notion of getting ARPA funding is very appealing because I do worry about your comment, Michael, that if, if we were to use this money from your other pot of funds, it would mean that some other program might be displaced. And I, I have concern about that because you're doing such a terrific job with, with what you have. And exploring ARPA is, is a great idea. I would say too, that because it's beds, it's, it is appealing. I, so the funding, the, the request is for that 303-519, correct? Through the end of June, is that what it is?
I actually asked for clarification for that, Chair. And the 303-519 is the cost for the entire 2022 calendar year.
Oh, right, right.
And six months would be approximately $160,000 at, as currently budgeted in the city's current contract with the county.
Okay, okay. So I guess my other question is, and you, you did state that they had put in a request or a grant application or something for next year, is that?
I, yes, Outsiders Inn has, has, I apologize. Outsiders Inn has submitted an application to the county for county homeless funding for this activity. And if they were awarded, you know, if that proposal is, is selected and the council approves of that, that award, that contract would go into place July 1st, 2022. I've been told by Aaron Land at City of Vancouver that, that the city has also encouraged Outsiders Inn to apply to the city for additional affordable housing funds. My understanding from them is that if Outsiders Inn does that, if the city selects that proposal for funding, that contract would also take place starting July 1st, 2022. I, I do not have visibility if, if that is happening. Or, you know, if anyone in the city is, would be in a position to know if even contracts have been, proposals have been selected yet.
Okay, so kind of what I was trying to get to here is if they've, if they've made a, if they are going to make an application, that's one thing. Have, have they made application to the county before? And if so, have, I think you said they're not under contract with us now. Have they ever been? And if they haven't been, have they made application and been turned down?
Uh, thank you for those questions. Outsiders Inn is currently in one contract with the county for outreach services. It is a new contract this year that they are just starting out with. And they've not, they've not been in any previous contract with the county. The city, I do not, outside of this shelter contract, I don't know what other contracts the city has with Outsiders Inn. They are a relatively new grassroots nonprofit to our community. So they don't, they don't have a very long record with us. And, and they're just starting to form their record with the county right now.
Okay, thank you.
I can add some further information. Michael, I don't, you, you weren't on that meeting this morning, were you? Okay, so.
No, I was not.
Yeah, let me talk about some of the things we just discussed and also give some broader context for Outsiders Inn. So number one, they, they are new. I understand they do, they're, they're getting their feet on the ground. And they're going to be participating in these safe, I mean, they're going to be the contractor for these safe tenting locations that the city is setting up. So they are really growing. My main points of discussion this morning with the County Manager and Vanessa was, you know, this is not going to be passed through funding to the city. This is going to be our own contract. And there's going to be performance metrics that will be measurable. And all of that's being worked on right now with this organization. You know, we're also hopeful, and, and I agree with Karen wholeheartedly, that this would be great to, to reach out to the city and say, hey, we'll take this on. And, you know, the performance issue is one thing that Vanessa is on top of. The other part of it is, you know, they, they haven't had great success with this shelter before, meaning, you know, it's just a night shelter. There's, has been really no other wraparound services or outreach. So some of the statistics aren't, aren't real good. They, they go right back to homelessness. So we need to make a concerted effort to join all of our other efforts to removing these people from, once they get the services of the shelter, to remove them from homelessness for the long term, not just the short term. So I, I'm in favor of this with what I heard this morning from Vanessa and the work that's being done with Outsiders Inn to make sure that they perform properly. And we'll know right away whether they do or don't. The meeting that we had to postpone or cancel about all of the shelter funding through ARPA, you know, we allocated 5 million and I, and I understand, Michael, and I got to have the list that a lot of that's already been allocated. But we always talked about lifting and shifting monies of that greater amount of $15 million to where it may be needed. So I am also interested in having that meeting rescheduled so we can go through all the shelter space. We need shelters, especially as we head, you know, get into the cold rainy winter months. So this is an important effort as long as we can work out the funding and performance issues, which I'm, you know, I am very confident both the manager and Michael and Vanessa are on top of all these issues.
And Chair, if I can too, I do want to say that Michael and Vanessa and their team has a program that ensures both accountability and data of all the contracts. So, and are some, have supports in place as well to ensure that the contractors have every opportunity to be success, be successful. And so that goes across the board. That's just not with the one contractor that was discussed this morning. That is a, a norm for their processes. Chair?
Thank you for that. Did somebody say something?
Yes, Chair, this is Councilor. Yeah, I am also in support of this. You know, definitely wouldn't want to see 27 shelter beds in our community go away on January 1st as we head into the coldest and wettest part of our year. So would, would definitely want to be supportive of that. You know, Outsiders Inn is new and young and getting their feet under them. They are also peer-led, which I think is really important as far as a direction for a lot of support services that we're seeing in behavioral health and for helping folks leave homelessness. They, they are very mission-driven. And I think that it would be great to continue to support them specifically as an agency as well. One of the things that I know I've heard in some of my conversations with, you know, Michael and Vanessa, Community Services and providers out in the community, is that even if we had all the money in the world for every program we want, we don't have necessarily the agencies to perform that work that in our community, we are, we are lacking. We have great agencies doing good work, but we, we need more because there's more need. And Outsiders Inn would be a wonderful candidate for continuing to grow. And I actually would look forward to them being able to work more closely with Community Services because this team has the expertise and the tools to help grow an agency, to do even more and serve our community even better. Which leads to a question. Michael, I know that this is not a county contract at this time, but looking at the budget that was given and given, and my understanding, having, having visited the shelter and talked with them, is that it, there's not a lot of other service provided. Can, can you say if there is much service provided? I know they get entered into HMIS, everybody who, who comes. But beyond a bed and a meal and some fellowship, is there much service offered in addition?
Not that I can tell. And, and I'm not, just to be very clear, I'm not saying that in criticism of the contract as it exists now or the services that are being provided as it exists now. This activity stemmed out of the WHO, you know, which as I, as I mentioned, was really about getting people out of the weather overnight during the worst part of the weather. And I think this has been a continuation of that activity, but, but increasing it so that it is year-round and that those beds don't go away at the end of the WHO season. And also to reduce the staffing burden from the community of faith that is providing the facility. So there, I'm sure from, actually from previous interactions with Outsiders Inn, that they have every intent to engage people, not just at this shelter, but in all their activities and try to connect them to other services. I don't, you know, whether we're looking at the outcomes at this activity to this point or what has been available right now, I think it's just primarily a bed in a place to be overnight, not, not a broader connection for the people who are staying there.
Right, thank you. And, and that was my understanding. And yeah, I, I was asking not as an opportunity to criticize the agency either, but just to make sure that I understood and hadn't missed something about it. So I'm supportive of, of, I'm supportive of supporting this. Regardless, I am also supportive of exploring ARPA funds and seeing if that's something we can do. A, an additional proposal I'd like to make, and that's especially if there are, if this is relevant to ARPA, would be what could we do to help add support, to help improve the outcomes? Would there be a possibility to, especially, I'm thinking especially with ARPA because I know we have, you know, potentially a, a larger pool there, to bring in other outreach or support to try to help improve outcomes of moving folks from shelter into housing? As opposed, you know, as opposed to saying, oh, we wish those outcomes would be better. How can we actually put more into the system to get more out of it?
Uh, Councilor Lins, are you, are you asking, are you asking me or was, was that directed to the other?
It's, it's a little bit of a, it's a general proposal. I mean, if the rest of the council isn't supportive of that.
Yeah, I, I discussed that with Vanessa this morning, and I think that's, that's going to be in the works. So.
Correct. But, but is it actually part of this piece?
Chair, can I please finish?
Oh, I'm sorry, you froze, so I just spoke.
Okay, we waited for you yesterday when you froze. So I guess it was, it was a little bit more of a proposal to explore what we could possibly do. I don't know the specifics on that, being that it's not my industry. But if we were able to bring in additional services to help them, I think that would be a good thing. So it's an open-ended question. I think there's this proposal, but depending on, on, on the outcome, I'd love to see what we could do more to support them.
That, Councilors, I, I would just add and just to, to inform, inform that discussion that any shelter contract that we enter to, we follow our homeless action plan. And in that, we do require additional services to be provided. So as we entered in this contract with Outsiders Inn, we will ask them, well, require them to have a housing focus, to engage with case management, to bring in outreach teams if necessary to, to help engage people. So we will definitely, with, with this contract and any shelter contact, contract that we enter in, just our focus is not only to provide a bed. It's always going to be, provide a bed as a stepping stone to getting, to leaving homelessness.
Thank you, Michael. And so then perhaps to phrase my thought a different way, if that is one of the requirements of a contract with the county, which I think is a good thing, then potentially the dollar amount might need to be higher. then potentially the dollar amount might need to be higher because those services have not been provided in the prior contract. So I would hope that we wouldn't say we expect you to do more with the same amount, but instead let's find out what those costs are and make sure that they get into the contract as well.
Michael is nodding his head yes. I think what we're being asked to do today is an approximate amount of half of what this yearly amount was or the one, one sixty, one hundred and sixty thousand. And that's all I'm prepared to act on right at this time, point in time and
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Counselor Madge, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Well, I thought you would finish. Yeah, so the wraparound services are going to come through the, you know, all, all the wraparound services that we are only focused on this one contract right today. I mean, our homeless action plan should take care of the rest and all the other ARPA, ARPA funding that we've already allocated for the year should fund those wraparound services through other contracts and other whether, other behavioral health outreach. So we're only focusing on this one shelter contract.
That's correct. And I'm going to call for the question right now. If we need a motion for this, could I get a motion to approve this, please?
A motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve this gap funding for for the St. Paul, is it St. Paul's Men's Shelter through Outsiders Inn and or, or approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to fill the gap between now and the end of June. Is there further discussion?
Chair?
Counselor Lance?
Thank you. Yeah, I would just like to hear back from Community Services when this is finalized and moving forward about, about the state of the contract and, and what is included within it.
Will do.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you. Going to Counsel report. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Counsel.
Reports. Any reports? Approve of work session request, surface mining overlay, overview.
Yes, so this was at the request of the council. And so this is just the official nine-step planner to get this on the calendar for mid January. So this is to provide an overview of the surface mining overlay, including the DNR inventory from two thousand and five, the history of the changes in two thousand and fourteen, a summary of the previous and current surface mining overlay designations, and then obtaining any direction that the council chooses to move forward with.
Okay, without objection, we will have that since the council has asked for it already. So mid-January. Lindsay, do you have anything to report on policy issue?
I do not today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go into executive session for one pending litigation. RCW forty-two thirty-one ten, one, aye. For thirty minutes, there will be an attorney present. Will there be action afterwards?
There will be no action afterwards. So if we are in for thirty minutes, I'd suggest that we save the time, we'll be coming back.
Okay, and so it is now twelve oh four. It'll be twelve thirty-four that we will come back to council time. See you on the other side, folks.
The council has extended executive session until twelve forty-five. Hello, I am announcing that the council will be extending executive session for ten more minutes until twelve fifty-five.
Time. We've completed our executive session. We have no action for this particular time today. And so we are adjourned. Thank you all for your participation.